Now you know.
Can we watch it again?
Uh huh. Sorry, I'm hearing the first time.
Can't hear me, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
You said that one more time than I did.
Trying to be all professional like you. You sound like you should be a good evening.
Good evening.
Radio announcer, yeah. All right, it is six o'clock. We will start our workshop discussion. I know that Councilmember Kamiskas was not going to make it tonight due to work schedule conflicts. And Councilmember Receivers was going to be late. I'm not sure what time he'd get in. So we will get started with our workshop discussion. It's a continuation of capital facilities plans. And this will be an opportunity for further discussion of priorities for you guys in relation to the capital facilities. We have with us, for the record, Councilmember Foyer, Councilmember Dunn, Mayor Protem Kennedy, Councilmember Kurtz. So far, and then on the meeting from the staff, we have Lisa Keys, Jen Camp, Ben Schmidt, Todd Henderson, Josh Loretto, Ann Swenson, and in the audience is our trooper with a bum leg, Sergeant Morgan. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started on the workshop of capital facilities.
Just just a couple of comments. I want to remind council that the purpose of the workshop is really to review the prioritization matrix, to give you opportunities to ask your questions and provide us with feedback, and also to provide us with your suggested changes to the capital facility plan. We're hoping that at the close of the workshop, that you'll give me just a moment to summarize what I heard from you all, and then we'll ask you to confirm any proposed changes that are identified through course of the workshop. Next slide, please. Todd, next slide. Thank you. So first of all, we had the we had the opportunity to compile the ranking, the prioritization matrices, and kind of rank these based upon council members that had an opportunity to respond. A couple of things, Councilmember Kamiskas asked me to share with you that she started this a couple of times and had been struggling with some of the answers. There are some things that really can't be compared to each other. Can the anticipated dollar amount in funding source be added? Also, if the funding sources are different, then it's not a fair comparison. So those were her comments. Councilmember Langford did provide his prioritization matrix late in the day today, but I couldn't open the file, so that's not included. Anyhow, so to start off with the projects based upon those that were able to provide us with their feedback, the priority is listed on the screen with Public Works as the number one priority of parks and public facilities, Trailhead being the second, library to facility upgrade being the third, and public art being the fourth. The fifth was Orchard Park Community Gardens, and the sixth was Rocky Hill Park Shade Structure. And then it goes on down from there. I'm not going to read each and every one of them. Next slide, please. With regard to ranking of transportation projects, Henry Road Overpass was number one, followed closely by Harvard Road Bridge Widening, Ridge Line High School Signal, and the solar powered school zone speed limit signs for the high school, Country Vista and Legacy Ridge Signal, which is currently in design, and Country Vista Boulevard Appleway Turn Lane was number six, and it goes down from there. Next slide, please. In terms of the trails and pedestrian paths, we ended up with the sidewalk improvements on Mission Aladdin to Caulfield, which is basically closing that gap on the north side of Mission as the number one ranked project, the sidewalk master plan being number two, sidewalk improvements to Madsen from Mission to Appleway, and pedestrian allocation being fourth, and trail lighting master plan being fifth. I will note that for those council, for all of these, I should have mentioned this earlier, for those who identified projects that were in the list that were either unfunded or they didn't think were worthy of consideration, they're marked as NA in those columns, and obviously their score was zero for those. So that's what we have for the prioritization. And with that, I think I need to turn it over to all of you to hear what your thoughts are, either on the prioritization and ranking, or as it relates to the capital facilities plan.
All right, this is your guys' opportunity. One of many to talk about some of your thoughts. Who wants to jump in? Councilmember Dunn?
So Lisa, I'm grateful for the exercise. I think this is a pretty level-headed way to try and place items for immediate comparison and consideration. And I'd say establish a sequence based on what is known. So based on the results that I see for those who have responded, I'd say that's as much as the staff right now can work with as to the recognized council-based priorities. So yeah, I think this exercise has played effectively, and that's what I recognize on the 20th, at six after six.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Let me put the first spreadsheet again.
Todd, can you pull up that first one? Yeah, I think one.
There you go.
There you go.
I just kind of wanted to look at it again real quick.
Any other thoughts while she's taking a look?
I'd observe Shane for tonight's work as introduction of the city's budget. Is this anywhere akin to what's recognized in the budget? Are there any actions in the budget you think are reflective of these priorities?
Yeah, I think some of them are. Some of our ones that are carried over from this year, I'll deuce them out into next year. And then I think looking at, and I think that we need to continue to be forward-thinking, you know, when we look at our objectives as a council, and we look at our kind of strategic plan, I think a lot of this falls into place with that.
Good.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Well, when I'm looking at this, what I do like about it is it ranks some of the projects that we have actually underway and some of the ones that we've invested money into assessing. And I don't know if one came before the other, if that's part of the reason why people prioritize them. But I think that some of the, especially with Trailhead and I think the library, we have already had pretty significant community input in what they would like for those projects. And so I guess I'm pleased to see them rise above our priorities and move forward on them.
I'm sorry, what was that last part?
I'm just happy that they're at the top of the list so that we can begin to figure out how to fund them and start to work on them.
Yeah, absolutely. I think a lot of these projects are ones that we've been talking about for a while. And, you know, to Mayor Protem Kennedy's point, you know, we gotta, even in light of the environment we're in, we really want to move forward with some of these things and make the best decisions possible. I think with some of them, having a master plan is going to help lead the way for some of these projects. And I think we also need to be forward-thinking about what projects are on here that we hope to get funded through different categories, like the state with Henry Overpass. And, you know, we're always going to push and have advocates for those. But we also have to understand the environment that we're in, and the state, the environment the state's in, and some of the funding challenges that they're facing during all this, and start being strategic and thinking about, you know, what if, what if we couldn't get all the funding for Henry or, you know, some of those other things? And how are we still going to go about making those projects happen? Because they are definitely critical to our infrastructure. Councilmember Foyer?
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
I am struggling getting a good grasp of what all of the council members feel is important since we're missing some input here. So I struggle with that a little bit as far as a priority. Well, some of the things I expected to see at the top of the list in priority across the board because there are projects underway, as Annie said, in my mind, anything that was underway or is already in the process should be obviously your top priority. So I rank mine accordingly. One of the items on here, the library facility upgrade, we spent money on a with a research, some research to tell us what we needed in that department. And I don't believe the council has had a discussion to talk about it at all since it's been published. So I guess I understand the reasoning for ranking in the way we have as what's important. But I would sure like to see us have some follow-up discussion on the top five at least.
Absolutely. I think that's really the goal of all this is, you know, we had filled one out similar years ago. And knowing that we have some council members on board, some different priorities that have maybe shifted or that have stayed the same, I think it was a good exercise. And once we get everyone's information fully inputted, I think it'll give us a more clear-cut picture so we can have discussions on those kind of top five and start working our way down. Or, you know, looking at things that are smaller scale that we can tackle very easily. I remember, you know, one of the comments that Councilmember Kurtz had discussed during one of our council meetings was, what are some of the small, easy things we can pick away at? And then also be cognizant of those larger things that are priorities for you guys as well as the big community.
I guess another comment if I can?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So based on what Chris relayed to Lisa, I would totally agree. Some of these are so far out of balance with how it affects our budget. It's incredible. But I ranked mine according to some of the easier projects to do that would affect the majority of our citizens in the city and not be millions and millions of dollars to do it. So that's kind of the approach I took. Such as some parking lot area, some community gardens, things that are not super expensive but can benefit the citizens.
I think depending on how you look at these, I agree. Councilmember Foyer, I think with the, depending on how you look at some of these, some of them could actually be somewhat lumped together. So when we talk about, you know, things like even a community garden, you know, that could become a part of different departments or different volunteer groups that might want to start that out and get some donation dollars to get things kicking off with some of those, like a community garden. There's a lot of different opportunities in some of these areas, the Fallen Heroes. You know, we know that Multi Care that likes to fund projects like that. So I think some of those are ones that could be tackled by other entities within the body of this. So it'll be important that we have those conversations as a group on some of these top priorities for sure. Councilmember Kurtz?
My, that I was looking at this was similar to Councilmember Foyer's with things that were underway. Some of the things that felt like they were, would be pretty easy to do, like community gardens. I did take off quite a few because I felt like we needed to kind of focus. And with so many different ideas, it was really hard for me to rank some of these other ones. So not that I wouldn't be convinced that they could be a higher priority than they are, and that might change based on if we end up getting, well, the other half of the council's feedback on it. I think one of the things that I have a question about is, was tonight to kind of make some progress on picking? Where we, is that where we're headed tonight is identifying that? Because to Councilmember Foyer's point, we don't have half of the council's input, and I felt like we should be there by tonight. Am I wrong?
Yeah, I think the goal is that we'll get the rest of them inputted and calculated as they come in so we can see the totality of it at its fullest. And then that way we can start having discussions. But it's also an opportunity tonight, kind of knowing where things are at, to just see what your guys' different thoughts are on maybe why you picked this over that or why you might have linked this to that. So as an example, when I look at sidewalks, I kind of link the sidewalk pieces to a sidewalk master plan. If we don't have a master plan, you know, it's tough to do, pick different sidewalk areas. It helps from a selection process of what's priority from a sidewalk master plan standpoint, kind of like the pedestrian master plan we talked about, to identify those currieries. And then it also helps for budgeting purposes. So that's kind of why I linked the sidewalk master plan to the different sidewalk projects. So having a master plan in my mind will help us identify those priorities. So that's kind of how I looked at it with some of them and linking them together. But Councilmember Langford, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, good evening. When we do these, I think one of the things that would help making true determinations, as is presented tonight, we can go through and make our choices based on what we personally liked, okay? I like that project. I like the community gardens. I like the dog parks. But what's missing in this whole key is a, at least a ballpark idea of what it's going to take to accomplish. If I include in the top five or six, the Rocky Hill Park Shade Structure, not knowing that it's going to cost $70,000, I might not pick that to be a top priority over the Orchard Park Sound System, which was also 70 or 80,000. So if we're actually going to use these for budgets, we're missing the target in my own idea because there's no funding numbers here to give us any clues. So we pick Public Works Yard, but I don't know how much it's going to cost us to get done.
Yeah, that was one of the things that Councilmember Kamiskas had brought up. I've seen if we can get some rough cost items included to be able to identify.
Mayor, if I may? Understanding and my intent was that this be used to inform and kind of lead some, a thought process related to the draft capital facilities plan. You have the information in the capital facilities plan. This was intended to focus, to provide you with some focus in evaluating that capital facilities plan and seeing if there are opportunities based upon your priorities to move some project forward or to move some projects back or to eliminate some projects that really aren't considered to be priorities within the capital facilities plan. So this is, context of this was very specific to the capital facilities plan. And in each of these categories, these are the projects that are actually listed in your capital facilities plan.
Mayor, if I could add something?
Yeah.
I hope this, I'm going to make a comment. I hope this is helpful for the council. So as Lisa was describing, there's two projects in 2021 off this list that are proposed to be funded. One is the Public Works Yard, and I'm looking at the spreadsheet that it is a capital facility plan, and we have $600,000 identified to put in the Public Works Yard in 2021. And then we have another, let's see here, this would be the public art at 24,500. So we don't have a dollar amount in our 2021 budget for the Trailhead Facility Upgrade. It's not funded, and we don't have a number. And I think the number is going to be driven by the decision that the council makes about what type of project should we be looking at. Because right now, there is no dollars in our 2021 budget for the Trailhead Facility. So there is another matrix that is part of our report, I think Lisa put together, that has all those costs. The shade structure at Rocky Hill was $20,000, so the cost is in there. So the costs are available in a different matrix. So that's just something I wanted to present to the council. And if you do want to put a number in for the Trailhead Facility Upgrade, perhaps we can have another meeting to discuss what should that number be? Because that number is going to be driven by a lot of things. And ultimately, it's the council's decision as to what's the funding level for that project. The other thing I was just going to mention, and I'm just going to throw this out, is we tend to put a lot of things on this list so we don't lose track of them. But I'm noticing the golf cart charging station at City Hall unfunded is the very bottom of the list. Everyone looks like they put it as a zero or an NA. Do we even want to keep it? And I know Lisa said that, you know, we have projects, we need to keep them on the list. But if we really don't think that that's a project that we should be keeping in our plan, we would like to hear from the council if we should maybe eliminate that as a project altogether. Because it's not showing up as, it looks like it was a zero or an NA by all the council members so far.
So Katie, if I may, if I may, I do want to just clarify something that you said related to Trailhead. So at your last capital facilities workshop, you indicated that you wanted to see prioritized short-term maintenance items assuming status quo for the next several years with Trailhead. And you will see in the capital facilities plan that we provided you under asset management, so this is not capital projects, but asset management in the pink area, that we have indeed added that, and we have indeed added dollars for maintenance work that has been prioritized by Jen and her team for 2023, 2021, 2022, 2023, and so on and so forth. So this does really correlate back to the capital facilities plan and hopefully is a tool to help you maybe look at how we're funding things and where we're funding things. But again, as Katie pointed out, that the short-term maintenance dollars are really just a placeholder until we decide, decide, or, you know, keeping, kind of treading water until we decide where we're going with Trailhead.
So the upgrade is not funded, but the maintenance of the facility is funded.
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification, Lisa.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Dunn?
If you flip forward to the pedestrian section on the slide set there, Todd? To the spirit of how and if in the rank thing and discussion of these pedestrian moments, the cap, the cap plan with sidewalk improvements specifically Mission and Madsen, I'll call shoring up holes in the community. You know, I looked at them as not necessarily improvements or amenities as much as addressing where honestly, there's gaps. I hate to say the sidewalk ends, but literally it does on Madsen. So like, you know, and in that regard, yeah, the master plan fits in there for sure. It needs to pick up, I guess, where we say at least we've got everybody walking. But then to say, how can we improve that? And so it's great to see that those kind of lined up nicely just to recognize, yeah, shoring up the holes in the sidewalk. That would be how my decision-making was placed in that regard. Just to give, to give places for people to walk now, and then to make that plan to make them walk better in the future. Flip forward a couple widgets to the, you know, that first one that was the public and parks and stuff. With respect to the, you know, the decision-making process, I'd offer this, my perspective of capital facilities plan. Prioritization like this, I personally don't think is a part of how much it costs because if it is important, there may be grants or other opportunities to actually fund it. And so I like to assert that, you know, if a project has merit and a project has value, then part of problem-solving is to discover and seek how it could be funded. But that it doesn't intimidate or shy away from the notion that it has merit. And so that's kind of, you know, that's how I was looking at the blue and the green and just said, you know, if this is a value, if this has lasting, persistent value for the community, yeah, I'll recognize it in priority, and then we'll go about that process to discover appropriately how it might be funded. That was, that was how I worked it. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Deanna, I really like what you said there because that's how I was looking at it as well when I was comparing one thing to the other. Do I think this has more value in the community than the other? And not me personally, but what do I think that the community wants? And I couldn't agree more that if there's something that we need to invest in, then we can find a way to do that. I know that the Trailhead discussion is going to, it's going to cost us money, but it is an investment in the community, and we invested in it already. And so I, a couple of thoughts I have is if we didn't want to spend money, and I know this was pre-pandemic, we wouldn't have invested in these assessments and the research that was done on the library and Trailhead. So I think that we, I don't want to keep investing in assessments of projects if we're not actually going to follow through with them at some point. So I, and then I just want to say too that I know that things happen, but I am a little disappointed that we are missing several of these, the results. Because I think we all were operating off the same information, and we could have, it just, it delays the process for us to not have everybody respond. And I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Todd, can you unmute Councilmember Receivers?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, Hugh, can you hear us? Nope. I saw it go unmuted. I just can't hear him yet.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, finally. Sorry for technical difficulties.
No worries. So we're just talking about the capital facilities priority list?
Yeah.
One of the things that we were discussing was making sure we get the rest of the numbers inputted. And I know some of you have gotten your stuff into Lisa. And I know some of you have gotten your stuff into Lisa and, and she's going to work on getting those inputted, but it's, uh, to council member Kurt's point, it is imperative that we, uh, we get these in here, um, so we can have those discussions about how we want to do it and to what extent, you know? Uh, again, kind of to the point of using Trailhead as an example. Um, you know, we have to be cognizant of all the projects that we have coming up. Um, and that may very well dictate, uh, how extensive or lack thereof that we do some of the others. Um, I know that, you know, we've, for Trailhead, that's been on our priority list for quite some time now. And so we need to be able to start having those, that discussion and dialogue to get these projects moving. Council member Langford?
Yes, Mayor. Do any of our capital facilities, uh, ventures or any of the listing, do they have a, 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 a dollar amount, Lisa, that they're no longer a capital investment? If we're talking $20,000 for a shade at Rocky Hill, is that truly a capital investment?
So, um, if I can just say, different, different organizations have different policies. Um, as it relates to how we approached it with the capital facilities plan, something that is a maintenance item, it doesn't matter how much it is, if it's just maintaining the facility, that's asset management. And that, those are the pink categories. The blue categories are those things that are an add-on or an enhancement to an existing or proposed capital facility. So, um, that's kind of the difference, that's the distinction that we made. Um, and, you know, pointing it back to the strategic plan, uh, there were, you were very concerned about investing in, in parks and trails and transportation projects, but you were also very, very concerned, you had a category unto itself related to, um, protecting your capital investments, and that's really asset management. It's making sure that you're maintaining things so that the value of what you already have doesn't diminish over time. So that's, that's how we made the distinction here. And again, different organizations have different policies. I don't believe that there is a policy per se. We do use, um, although they're much smaller dollar amounts, um, uh, things like computers and technology because they are, what is the term that they use? I wish RJ was here, um, that, that they are attractive, um, attractive, uh, assets or whatever. So, um, because of that, um, I believe the state considers those capital, those capital facilities, um, or, or a, a capital project, even though the dollar amount does not rise to what you would normally consider to be that. But again, from an asset management standpoint, you know, we have, if you look at the, the technology we have in City Hall as a whole, or as in the city organization as a whole, that's a pretty big investment and making sure that you maintain that and keep it in, um, up to date is, um, is important, uh, for the functioning of the city. So, I don't know, I, did I, did, did that kind of help answer the question?
I'm going to try to take a stab at it. This is how I kind of looked at it, and if you are extending the life of an asset, then it's a capital improvement. So let me give you an example, a roof on a facility, um, it's a 20-year roof, you put a new roof on, you extended the life of the roof for 20 years, as opposed to fixing something that's broken. Um, a pothole, you go out and you fix a pothole, you're fixing the pothole, but if you put an overlay on it, you've now invested in the life of that road. So that's how I kind of look at it, uh, facility that is maintenance because you fix something that's broken.
So there's, we could be a, a light bulb or something. I'm not trying to be facetious, but I'm just trying to get an understanding. Replacements to light bulbs, if they go out? Yeah, I'm trying to understand, are we making, are we trying to make decisions that are in keeping with the upcoming budget as well as the capital facilities plans, where we can use the capital facility plan to help fund the budget or to figure out the budget? All right? And if so, some of these things, like already been, uh, talked about with Phil and them is that, you know, we could, we could fund some of these off to the side and just get them off the list and get them funded if that's the intent of the council. But we have two or three here that if we say yes to, we're finished with the capital funding for the year and probably next year. So that's my point. If we pick one or two of the top ones here, we're finished. I mean, we don't have to spend a long time deciding about all the other small ones because we can't afford them.
Well, that actually is, that is actually part of the story for our budget this year as it relates to the, only those capital projects that happened in 2021 are in the budget. But one of the things that we had to consider is, are the projects that we already have underway? And we've got some pretty major projects underway and pretty costly projects. And that, that limits both, uh, that, that limits what you have available to work on. We have to finish what we have underway.
That's right.
And that was a, that was a big part of the philosophy in looking at the capital facilities plan this year is what do we have going on and what is our capacity to do more than that? And that is, and, and if you remember from my original presentation, that was one of the things I showed you. I showed you the projects that we have underway right now. And that, um, that, that's a big consideration in looking at what new projects we can bring on this year.
Lisa, you know, it might be helpful for council to see, and it's, it's the matrix, and I'm looking at mine, I think he sent out a copy to all the council members, but I'm looking at just 2021. And there's a lot of work in there. There is a lot of projects that are underway in 2021. Between the public works yard and public art, then I jump down to parks and facilities. We have $381,000. Then I look at transportation, we have $8.5 million. And then in the street maintenance, we have another $50,000. So this is a, this coming year, 2021, if we just tackle the public works yard and public art, um, some park improvements that are identified in the matrix, and our transportation project, and then some street maintenance, you're probably looking at about $10 million. Those are just round figures, but that's a lot of work. That's a lot of activity for, for community arts. I will, you know, kind of make the caveat that, that does assume that Henry Road is going and the big, the largest portion of those funds are for Henry Road. But that matrix is very helpful if the council wants to look at, um, Todd, is that something that you could put up on the screen? I know it looks like a lot of information, but if you just look at 2021.
It's one of those slides.
It's very helpful because I think it does reflect the priorities that we hear, um, I hope we hear from all of you, um, and also the, recognizing the transportation improvement that we all identified by Henry and Harvard are right, right there. Todd, do you know which one I'm referring to? I can.
Thank you.
This one. I don't know if he has it.
It's, yeah, there it is.
So, um, Todd, can you share, can you share my screen for a second, please? I have it up on my, on my computer.
Oh, okay. He just pulled it up.
I think you can, if you pick that little green thing, Lisa, you can share it from your side.
So if you just focus just on 2021, those are the projects that come out of that capital facilities plan that I hope is consistent with what's funded with, with the way the plan is prioritized by the council.
So, do you all see what I just put up? The capital, the 2021 capital investment summary, this was from a presentation or two ago? Are you all seeing that?
Uh, no, we're good. There it is.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yep.
Very good.
There's $10.7 million worth of capital work for just next year.
Right. And keep in mind, if we go on to the next, these are, so these are projects that we have underway that are continuing on this sheet. So it's not just what we have proposed for 2021. You have to realize that we, we're continuing on other, with, with other projects that are still open. And that's, that's part of the story, the, um, is what, what's carried over from 2020. Is that at all helpful?
I think it is.
Council member Kurt?
So what I think I'm hearing you guys say is you guys are going to be really busy over the next year and that some of these projects, not only from a dollar figure, but also from a, a workload perspective, might be a little much. Is that accurate? It's fine if it is, I just, that's what I feel like I'm hearing you say.
What I can say, what I can say is that we, we believe that we have the capacity, both financial and staff-wise, to, um, to deliver on this schedule, these projects. What, if there are other things that are a higher priority, what I would suggest to you is that we'd need to either look at, um, delaying something that's, that, that's proposed or, um, bringing on additional staffing resources if we have, if the funding's available.
Well, that's fair. That's why I wanted to ask the question because I think we're, we're talking about dollars, we're talking about priorities, but we also have to think of the staff time and do we have those resources to actually accomplish these projects? And that needs to be something we consider with this prioritization as well.
In, in my opinion, it's going to be, it's going to be a hustle, it's going to be a lift, but I think we can do it.
Thank you.
Council member Foyer, I think I saw your hand.
Uh, yeah, just a little frustrated here, sorry. Um, is it, is it fair to say that we could look at the, the previous, the 2020 capital facility plan, what's been budgeted and 2021? Cause some of the stuff is rolled over from, is going to roll over from 2020 into 21. It's, can we, can we address the items that have been budgeted for by the previous year's council? For example, the public works yard, we're obviously not going to stop that midstream, at least I don't think so. So maybe a way to look at this is, uh, identify the projects that are already underway, like Lisa already has done, just did put up on the screen here. Identify projects that are going to roll over from 2020 into 21 that's already been budgeted. And maybe the real question is, are the items that, uh, have a placeholder budget or don't have a budget, maybe that's what we need to circle back on and discuss after we have a discussion about all of the items that are already budgeted for or, or are underway. Is that fair?
Very fair.
Um, goes back to what Lisa just said, you have $10 million worth of projects going on. Um, as I look at the, it's very hard to read the spreadsheet, um, unless you, you have it on a big screen and you can zoom in on it, which I'm looking at here in front of me. And there's projects on here that, there, there's items on our capital facility plan that was on this matrix that we went through that are out past 2021. And I, I think the intent of this is to identify projects that are, we want to move forward on so we can help establish a budget. Is that correct? Yes, no?
Well, I, so, so there's, there's two things at play here. There's the budget, which is what, what are we going to do in 2021? And there's capital facilities plan, which is really trying to look ahead and plan for, try and prioritize the myriad of things that we see as being needed in the community and making sure that we have, have a plan for how we're going to deliver that. That's what the capital facilities plan is trying to do. And so if there's things that we're missing that are important that aren't funded in there, or if there's things that are maybe reflected in out years, 2025, 2026, that you think are important and may not get it in the 2021 budget, but we, but it may make sense to move it up to 2022 or 2023. What we do in looking at this, uh, over a six-year period is we try and balance both the funding sources. So, so RJ and I work on trying to figure out, make sure that we're not hitting any one of our revenue streams too hard as we balance this out. And so, so it's kind of a constrained, um, uh, effort. And that, and we also, um, but we also look at what we think staff can deliver. And that's, so those are, so, so it's, it's an attempt to look at all these things that we value and think are important as a community to happen, but trying to get a plan for how we can deliver it in, in a, more than just a one-year timeframe. Your budget looks at the one year. The six-year says, this is, and this is what it's going to look like over time for us to deliver on all these things that you, the community have told us that you want.
I totally understand. I, I guess all I'm saying is, projects that are underway should not be part of the equation when it comes to prioritizing.
I, I, I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
I feel like the council, whether it's the seven of us or the council that was last year, prioritized that already in the past and we're obviously going to honor that. So, um, i- if we could look past those things that we already have plans for, already have budgets for, maybe that'll be a, a faster way to decide what's most important going forward.
I think that's a good point. So there are projects that span multiple years. I know, I know Andy has your hand up, so I apologize, but, um, so there are projects that span multiple years. The council, before you decided that, and this is my recollection, that they were going to take an incremental approach to the public works yard, so we were going to invest in its development over a number of years. We weren't going to build it all out in one year. Um, you know, this year we're focused on the drainage improvements and the water and the sewer and, um, putting the salt, um, area for, for snow removal. So those, that's just an example, um, but I think you make a good point. If the decision's already been made and the project's funded and is going forward, why are we still looking at it whether or not it's a priority? I think that's a valid comment.
Council member Kurt?
I'm wondering if, whether it's when we discuss this next or not, I'm wondering if a way to kind of think about it and to kind of even fine-tune the prioritization of it, like what council member Foyer is saying is, some of these things are already in the budget, they're already underway for 2021. Some of them are probably already underway or going to be for 2022. So for the next six years, what we're talking about, perhaps we can look at it from that, like, six years and start slotting things into the years. Cause we're not, we're not going to do Trailhead, that, we're not going to do all those things in one year anyway, but I'm just wondering if we can start to figure out over the next six years, what year does it make the most sense for us to do this? If we're talking about Trailhead and we know it's a priority, we aren't going to get to it in 2021. I think there's so much more design and all, so many more discussions to be had, I guess, about what it is we want to do or what we think the community needs, that it wouldn't even be this year anyway. So, does that even make sense? I mean, I guess as far as pointing it.
If I may, it does make sense and that's exactly what we're, that's why we're tying this to the capital facilities plan because capital facilities plan is the vehicle to, to plan that out and to identify when that's going to be, how much it's going to cost and what, how much you're going to spend and when you want to see it happen. And, and so that's, so, so that's exactly why we tie this, this prioritization matrix to the capital facilities plan.
So I'm wondering if like the, the next step could be, like we have, say we have the top five, whatever that ends up being with everybody else's feedback, we have the top five, maybe take out what's already funded and underway out of that and put it into the, the years that it's funded for. But of those top five, let's talk about what year we're going to do those, if they are priorities or top three, or it doesn't matter to me what they are. Does that make sense? Am I making this too hard? Nobody?
I think you've concretely described the utility of.
I think you've concretely described the utility of a plan. And so, yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
I think I'm trying to figure out how we can plan because I feel like we've had this 45 minute discussion. I don't know where we're going.
So if I can make a suggestion, if I could make a suggestion and and that is that we do have a plan, we have the the six year capital facilities plan. This is a modification of what was adopted last year. It was adjusted based upon, again, what we know today in terms of costs, what has been accomplished, what didn't get accomplished that still needs to get accomplished. And we've kind of we've massaged that plan a little bit to be to to kind of bring it into the current what we know today. And that is if you if if we could ask you to dig into the capital facilities plan, the spreadsheet and look at, we have funding for each of these projects in different years, the ones that are in light blue throughout this are ones that are that that are unfunded at this point. So maybe those are, you might want to look at what we have that's funded and how it aligns with your priorities. What we haven't identified funding for and what you're thinking that you'd like to see or when you'd like to see it and have some conversations around how you might change this plan to better align with your priorities. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I I thought we were I thought we were doing that tonight. So I I thought we were gonna put these things in the capital facilities plan tonight based on feedback and then see how the budget shakes out.
So councilmember Hertz, the budget that you have today that the mayor is going to be presenting includes the list of projects, funding and the resources to deliver those projects, the way they're described right now.
Let's say hypothetically, in 2021.
2021, correct. Let's say hypothetically, you want to look at your capital facilities plan and take something that's identified for 2023 and move it into 2021. That's the kind of stat that we're looking for because the matrix shook out different. So the matrix was identified. And then the question is the alignment between the matrix and what we currently have in the budget that Lisa's showing you. And I apologize, it's difficult to do in a Zoom meeting. But Lisa, why don't we send down the these these spreadsheets that show the dollar amount of the project for 2021? And then as you go through the budget process, if there's something that you that you see in there that you don't think should be in there or something that you don't see in there, that's the feedback that we're looking for for the budget purpose.
For the budget. Okay, so that facilities purpose because you also have to adopt the capital facilities plan this year. So this this is something you adopt every year. So that's so those things that you don't see in the 2021 budget and that you or that you have identified as priorities that you don't see funded on this are those things that you're going to want to add and you're going to want to look at what that does to the rest of the projects in this list. But there are a number of projects on the list, particularly in parks and public facilities that that have been identified but have never been funded. And so though, you know, the question becomes one of if it's not funded, does it does, do you continue to keep it on here as a as a project, a future project wish list or what? Certainly. And again, the other thing is looking at the projects that are here and what of these are priorities that you need to move forward. Whether it's in the 2021 budget or whether it's in it, it's just in a future year. But this capital facilities plan does have to get adopted in the same timeframe as the budget.
So when do we, we need to make a decision, but it's not tonight. That's what I'm hearing. But we're going to talk about it again.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is we go through the budget like we have the last, we did last year. We we started walking through the budget, your packet and looking at the items, having discussions about them and going through that budget kind of piece by piece to make sure we're all on the same page so we can approve it. And when I when I looked at this, I compared, when you get your budget packet, you kind of compare the capital facilities plan and that five year plan out to 2025. As Katie noted, and comparison to this chart that was sent out to everybody to fill out. And I I think that in itself should help guide in some facet what those costs are associated with those projects, obviously pending some of the unknowns like trailhead or the funding for Henry and, you know, is is the state gonna have the funding and be able to make decisions on that sooner than later? You know, some of those are question marks because we don't know where they're going to sit with their budget. So that's also going to dictate some of those. But there are some of these that we definitely know about, whether it's funding internally or the potential funding externally that we can chomp away at pretty easily. But to that point earlier, if there's some that are on here that you guys don't foresee as being priorities over the next five years or four years or ones like Katie was talking about that aren't on here that you think should be, that's really the objective of this as we move along through this budget discussion before we approve of the budget. Councilmember Langford.
Yes, Mayor. Let's talk about what you just said. If we think something should be moved up, taken off, etc. We've done this exercise so many times. And we have a list of projects that have been broken down into three categories as I view them. Number one, they're ongoing and will continue to be ongoing in the following year. The second are ones that have been funded. The third category is a whole list of things that haven't been even funded. No source of funding has been attached to them. So if they haven't met the level, at some point, we have to pare all this down, okay? And and move to a point and the point of the meeting should be to make the decision. So let's let's don't if it was important that we would have funded it. That's my point. If it's not, if it's not worth having funded, it doesn't rise to the level of needing to be under our scrutiny for this this exercise. So, yeah, they may be important, but this coming year, they they may make the five year schedule, the capital facilities plan, but they don't rise to 2021 or 2022 or 2020 for that matter, because we have carryovers. So we need a cutoff point here where we can get down to to making solid decisions. And I think we've already given our nod to certain projects because they're ongoing. Other projects because we want them funded. It does that make sense or am I wrong on those assumptions?
No, I'd say you're correct. Councilmember Hertz.
And I just wanted to say that I I like what councilmember Langford just said. I I felt like maybe I misunderstood, but tonight we were going to kind of pare down some of the noise, some of the ones that they're just not a priority and then get to talking about through the budget process, how to fund the ones that are priority. So perhaps I misunderstood where we're what we're going to be doing tonight, but I was hoping we would get to the point where we just stopped talking about and seeing some of the projects that we just know we're not going to move forward on as a group and figure out through the budgeting process and the capital facilities planning process that we have to approve which ones and how we're going to fund them at the expense of other things that may need to come out of the budget. So that's why I've been asking so many questions. And I apologize for that, but I thought we were going to be a little bit more decisive tonight on some of those things. So I apologize for misunderstanding.
No, it it's absolutely great. And we we encourage those questions because we want we want to get these pared down. You know, that's really the hope of this. We got to get the rest of the the information inputted from from what you guys feel are those priorities. And that was at at the request of redoing this at one of the last council meetings. Councilmember Langford.
Yes, sir. You know, to me, I I think we can make the process a lot simpler, okay? We need a list of everything that has already been funded and is underway. Okay, that's one list. And all we got to say is yes or no. Do we keep on those? Is that priority for 2021? Yes, no. Check them off. We're through with that. What's the next category? Prioritize the ones that have funding. Got it. One, two, three, four, five, move on. Now you have what you're going to put on, not only funded and continued, but the priority of the ones that haven't been funded yet. And we go through that lit and we're finished. You know, I just I think we're mixing all the apples together and it's getting hard to bob for the one. Okay, it comes to the top. So I I think we can just really make it a lot simpler by saying we have these, we're going to continue funding them, yes. After that, we have some ones that have funding. Are you still interested in those? Or do any of the ones in the bottom have to move up to the top of that list? Yes, no, yes, no, move on. That is your capital facilities plan. And it would also serve to help the mayor budget.
Okay, well, in a lot of the time, I'm going to get the regular council meeting started. Obviously, we're going to get the rest of your data inputted and we're going to have further discussions on this in more detail for sure. Please, please, please get your information inputted so we can start having these deeper dive conversations and we'll work on getting you that other information of completely what's underway, what's budgeted for 2021. And we can kind of put some earmarks into those. And if you know of a a better way of creating a wheel or have some ideas of how to lay this out differently, this is how we've done it in the past. We're open to how we change that and modify it for the future. So welcome to our 2020 or October 20th, 2020 city council meeting, public hearing. This meeting and public hearing are being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can move productive. Consistent with Governor Enzi's orders, 20-28 Point 11 dated October 2, 2020, all public meetings continue to be held remotely. We're following the directions of that order. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. There will also be an opportunity to write comments on the city 2021 proposed budget during public hearing. I'm conducting this meeting in the city council chambers. Joining me tonight in the room are State Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Dan Swenson, Police Sergeant Darren Morgan, IT Support Todd Henderson. Also on the line, we have Lisa Keys, Ben Schmidt, let's see, Jocelyn and Jen. We also have a number of citizens on the meeting as well. I'll be doing a roll call here shortly. Attending remotely, I believe, I want to make sure Sean Sean Bals is on.
I'm here, Mayor.
All right, perfect. And then I already announced the other ones. As I mentioned earlier with the public comment, when those times come, I will acknowledge public participation for up to three minutes. You can hit your chat feature and let us know that you'd like to speak and we will give you that opportunity for that three minutes. For the record, please let us know your name. And if you're a City of Liberty Lake resident, you can do so by hitting that chat feature on the bottom. And if you're not speaking, please stay muted for the purposes of background and noise. Starting out with the agenda, we will do the invocation. God, our Father, I thank you for all the blessings that you provide us each and every day. I know this has been a challenging year for all of us. I ask that you continue to watch over us and all those that serve us in all capacities. And I ask that you please guide us in making the best decisions possible for our community. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen. All right, we'll now hit the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. Mayor Proton Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Foyer.
Present.
Councilmember Severs. Councilmember Severs. Well, we'll work on getting him back. Councilmember Hertz.
Present.
Councilmember Langford.
Present.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Mr. Mayor. As you've mentioned, the Councilmember Kamiskas has a work schedule which conflicted tonight, so I make a motion that we excuse her.
No, she's here.
She's actually on the call.
Oh.
And she's muted. So somebody's got to unmute Chris.
Oh, very good.
Yep, if Todd can unmute Chris.
And Hugh.
And Hugh.
Thank you, I'm here.
Thank you.
I I was taking the brunt of two days off. The work still had to get done. So sorry, I missed the workshop, everybody.
And we're we're trying to get Hugh back on. Hugh, can you hear us?
Yes.
So well, I'm sure that he will be joining us back here in a second. He may have lost lost the call here. So agenda approval, Mayor Proton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I make a recommendation, we approve it with with one change or or consideration. And that would be on item number 11, where it says, public hearing and appeals should read City of Liberty Lake's proposed 2021 budget, where budget needed to be added to that.
Okay.
Second.
Noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Shane, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could you just note for the record that Dan Dunn is present? Thanks.
Oh, sorry, Dan. My apologies.
It's all good.
I saw I saw you. I was in the process of looking for Hugh and seeing if he got back on. My apologies.
It's okay.
I I see you.
Okay.
Acknowledge that. So in in case the Councilmember Severs can't get back on, do we want to make it?
This is Dan. I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Severs technical difficulties.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're we're reaching out and trying to communicate with him, so hopefully he'll get back on. So this is the first opportunity for citizen comments. And I know that we have at least one, Mr. Larry Alexander. So we will. Can you hear me, Larry?
Yes, I can.
Great. You want to start us off?
I'll be respectful of your three minutes. I'm Larry Alexander, a resident. You have some handouts, a picture of my wife, my dog and myself. This is a great place to live. We've lived here three years. I'm not a personal friend of Mayor Shane, but I think we're lucky to have him. I think we can do a lot better fighting the virus. Let me give you an analogy. If a fire broke out right now in City Hall, what would we do? Would we say, well, let's discuss it at the next monthly meeting? Would we get look at for a policy and procedure manual? Or would we check to make sure the city council members were there or the people who might fight the had two years' experience? Of course not. We just get there and work and try and get the fire out. Well, we have a firestorm with the coronavirus, which is much more a worse. Well, we have a firestorm with the coronavirus, which is much more worse than if the city hall, uh, burned down. Uh, I'm a retired professor of management. My UCLA, I got my PhD, but I taught at Oregon State. Management is simply defined as getting work done through other people. Incidentally, if I, my, my voice gets a little, uh, up, uh, I'm not mad at you, I'm mad at the virus. If management is getting work done through other people, then self-management is managing yourself. There's a few things that I do that I'm not saying that our city should do. I've set up this hotline for people to call me. Quite frankly, if, uh, Mayor Shane or Kate or one of the councilmen wanted to have a hotline, I think people would listen more, uh, to them than me. I put a, uh, sign up on the, uh, post office box and it stayed there for three days. And it said, "We love the post office, we're moving the mail on, we want the virus to move on." My own daughter thought I could get arrested for that. It stayed there three days and I think at least 50 or 100 people saw the, uh, sign. Uh, I wear a mask, uh, even when I bicycle outside. I do it as product placement so that people would see it and, uh, think, oh, maybe this is a good idea. Incidentally, if the virus went away tomorrow, I would wear my mask so I wouldn't get sinusitis or, uh, get pneumonia. If any of you want to call me on the hotline and get some ideas on what we can do in your department, please do, and, uh, I don't want to go over three minutes, so I'll quit now.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Appreciate all your, your ideas and feedback, thank you. Uh, other citizen comments?
You can hit the chat. Yes, Mayor, uh, this is Mark. This, can you hear me? This is Mark Pinch trying to get into the citizens' comments, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, sir, we can hear you.
May I go next or, you know, are we standing in line?
We, we can hear you.
Okay, shall I continue? Okay, thank you. Before I, before I, um, start my three minutes, I'd like to ask for a point of clarification. Um, on the vote that you took about, uh, let's see, two meetings ago, on the sale of the 23 acres of open land between Legacy and Liberty Drive, Councilmember Dan Dunn was, uh, had made comments that perhaps there was a lot of discussion that didn't play, take place that should have. My question is, uh, has the council scheduled anything for further, uh, comments or for education on the sale of that property?
Yeah, yes, we are having further discussions and looking into options of what can be done and what, what the council would like to see, uh, as well as the citizens. So we're, we're taking all that feedback in.
Okay, so how, how do citizens, um, facilitate that input, especially the stakeholders?
Uh, you can do it right now, you can, uh, write, send an email in, uh, to myself or anyone here at City Hall, Katie Allen. And we can also have it read on public record during a meeting if you'd like. So you're, you're free to speak now on it.
Well, I'll, I'll speak now shortly, but I'd, I'd rather certainly do so in context of your overall discussion. But I just would like to make the point that, um, the stakeholders were certainly, a lot of them were caught by surprise by this being a council agenda item and was voted very quickly, um, without any notification other than your, you know, your normal, um, agenda publication. But something that's this important, we certainly would hope that you would involve the people that have worked for years to try to make that either open space with a local trail or the Liberty Lake Connector, which would go from all the citizens of Liberty Lake, include the legacy citizens, and then hook up to the, um, the big Salty's Uplands Park, uh, which is 550 acres. That was the dream, is that that would all have connectivity and be a great addition to the, to all of our citizens. So, um, I'll cut it off at there, as long as I'm, you know, I can, uh, have other people that want to speak and have input and can write letters, as long as we have time to do that, that's the main, uh, question that I would have tonight.
Yes, sir. You definitely, you definitely have time as well as, as, as well as anyone else that would like to make comments.
We'll do so in writing, is that how you'd like to have it?
Either in writing or during council meeting, uh, during these public comments, absolutely.
Okay, well, just for the record then, uh, I can tell you that the Liberty Lake Neighbors for Trails are absolutely against the city selling this property. We think that is a very, um, short-sighted action. This, this is an offset to the community that has tremendous potential. And whether you're for or against the Liberty Lake Connector, it still has tremendous, um, community potential just for open space and building local trails. So, uh, with that, I'll just, uh, thank you very much for the time and we'll continue later, I hope, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Other citizen comments? Okay. Not seeing any, there will, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting here. So we will, uh, move on to the, uh, the City of Liberty Lake 2021 proposed budget. So this is, you guys, uh, have or have ready for you to pick up, if you haven't picked them up already, the, uh, 2021 proposed budget. I encourage you to, to look through it. Make sure you, uh, highlight some areas you want to have deeper dive conversations on or have questions on. And, uh, we'll continue these conversations as we get further into the budget. But I did have, uh, something prepared to read for the council that has already seen it and, uh, want to make sure I read it out for the, uh, community members as well. So I'll start it off. City Council and their Liberty Lake residents. Who would have thought on January 20, or January 1st, 2020, we'd be facing one of the most challenging years of our lifetime? We ended 2019 with the water boil order in place, then moved into 2020 quickly facing COVID. With some staff member changes, some serious divide throughout the country. And despite all these major roadblocks, uh, what, what, what we did not do is waiver in our promise to the community and the city staff that we would be united, working together to make sure our beautiful community thrives during these challenging times. We all rolled up our sleeves and jumped in to do our individual parts, making sure as a city came through 2020 and when we move into 2021, ready on all fronts. When COVID hit, we reacted swiftly, working with citizens and local businesses alike to make sure we got through this together. US citizens stepped up to support our local businesses. Our staff worked extremely hard and our city council have also worked extremely hard to make sure that we're making the best decisions possible. They started discussions on master plans for pedestrian crossing, plans on what to do with our existing facilities and lands, and looked at what our community and staffing needs will be, not just now, but for the future, bigger picture, uh, for full grow-up. This is a proactive approach, I had hoped for, uh, all of you, uh, and you all responded, working together to make it happen. Now is the time to look forward to the future of our community and to continue to have that proactive mindset, not waiting for items to trigger our actions, but to have a strong plan in place. We need to look forward and not get caught up looking in the rearview mirror at what was, but to rather what will be. It gives me great honor to roll out the 2021 budget. The 2021 budget has some conservative projections as we want to stay proactive. Also kind of keeping in mind that, uh, COVID isn't going, going away anytime soon. Some highlights include adding another police officer in order to stay ahead of the crime rates and keep our community in the top 10 safest cities to live. Working through the master plan on pedestrian crossings and traffic improvement to keep our community safe. Items include, uh, speed rating signs in high-traffic areas, traffic lights throughout Country Vista, West Liberty Lake Road to help keep our residents and students who will be attending Bridgeline High School safe. As a city, we're working diligently along with our partners and WashDOT to ensure that the overpass funding is secured. The Henry Road overpass funding from the state is more critical than ever. I would be remiss not to mention that you, as a citizen, can contact your representative as an Olympian and advocate for this project. And I can't say that piece enough. It's important that we all really, uh, strive to make sure that our voices on the side of the state are heard for the projects that we and our community need. Uh, we have had great partnerships with the police department, or sorry, the fire department, as well as the police department, the school district and the city. Um, I also was contacted by the water district, they said they'd be more than happy to write a letter of support as well to get over to Olympia. And I know that we have some state representatives, uh, and senators that are also helping push this project forward. So I continue to ask for all of your support in making that Henry overpass funding come to fruition. Addressing the needs for operation and maintenance in order to support their staff response for our continued growth will, will be important. Getting started on the trailhead golf course, building facility development, utilizing the grounds to the best of its ability, kind of keeping that open mind like we talked about. Continuation of the Harvard Bridge widening project and westbound on ramp modifications, which should be wrapped up early, mid 2021, keep our fingers crossed. Uh, maintaining our facility and fleet services while looking at our facilities and asking ourselves, do they meet the needs of our community now and into the future? Getting back to having our wonderful events for our community whenever possible. Uh, continuation on improvements towards citizen engagement and city marketing pieces to help bring in other businesses and diversify that sales tax part. Uh, and then a continuation of projects we had postponed for 2020 due to COVID rolling into 2021. Additionally, I would be remiss in not discussing some of the staffing transitions that we have had to make in 2020 and how we are shaping up for 2021. We said goodbye to some exceptional staff, um, Rudy is an example, and had a few other staff retire or move on with Brian, Barb, Anita, and Mick. With that being said, we will be starting 2021 with a new police chief, which we'll have further discussions here in a little bit. He will take that baton from Chief Asmus to continue to build a great police department for our community. I really want to thank all of our staff who have moved on to new and exciting adventures. Uh, I want to thank them for their services and I'm extremely grateful for everything that you all have done to, uh, help us get through this year and roll it into next year. I'd like to end this 2021 budget release with this quote. Those that say they can and those that say they can't are both right. So we have to make that decision. Are we, can we do it? Then let's do it, let's make it happen, let's start making those decisions for our community. So that, uh, concludes my proposed, uh, budget announcement. And then we will, uh, have further conversations on that budget as you guys get a chance to look through them, obviously. Any comments from council?
Thank you for the message, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, look forward to reviewing the draft. That's great.
Yeah, I, I definitely encourage you guys to really invest some time into looking through that budget, kind of page by page, making sure that you're highlighting things and putting your sticky tabs where we want to have further discussions. And reference to our workshop discussion, start, uh, moving these projects along that we know we need to get done now and, uh, start looking at projects for the future and, uh, making sure we identify those. So getting that priorities list will be, uh, very helpful for that. Any other citizen comment, or staff, I'm sorry, city council members' comments? Okay, not hearing any. We will move on to mayor and council reports. Any council members have any reports, comments, questions? Councilmember Dan?
Um, yeah, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to recount a, had a opportunity to visit with the Spokane County Sheriff's Office for an introduction overview of their training program. Uh, I spent an evening as a member of the Spokane County Human Rights Task Force, uh, observing and understanding more about the county sheriff's training programs. I'd say their depth and breadth and the extent to which, uh, they are results-based in how they drive was very impressive. I have a much greater sense of respect now, uh, that for, uh, public safety, law enforcement at the county level, it truly is a matter of the leadership of the organization in defining, uh, actions and people and process. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, voice that based on what I have firsthand observed as what is required of county-level officers in the, uh, performance of the duty, uh, I was greatly impressed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Okay. Not hearing any. Looking at the, uh, COVID conversations that we continue to have, uh, on the county level with the health district and other cities, uh, the numbers, uh, continue on. As Mr. Alexander said earlier, it's going to be important that we all continue to do our part, not only to keep each other safe, but to help our businesses thrive during this time. You know, I, I greatly worry about these winter months for our local businesses, i.e. our restaurants and coffee establishments. So, um, want to continue as, uh, I think all of us share the sentiment that we want to continue to support local as much as we possibly can to keep those businesses thriving during this time as we don't see any other businesses shut down. So, I, I appreciate everyone's, uh, actions that they're taking to help us get through this and continue to respond to it. I know that the, uh, businesses continue to be grateful for all the support. I've been going around to a lot of the local businesses and talking to them about what their continued needs are. Uh, some of them continue to need PPE supplies. So we're continuing to get those out as well as the face masks for citizens within our community. So, please make sure you get the word out when you're out and about at local businesses, which I know some of you have definitely done, to remind them that we do have supplies available for them, uh, and their businesses. Okay. Uh, not hearing anything else, we'll move on to the administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'll start my report with, are there any agenda questions? This is kind of a light agenda and there'll be lots of opportunity in the future to talk about the budget. We do have three executive sessions following this meeting with a different call-in, um, that's provided to the council members. So with that, I'm concerned to see if there was any questions on the agenda before I move on. Okay, so not seeing any. There's a lot going on, as the mayor mentioned in his budget message. One of the things that we have strived for is to keep our community informed, both on our website and our, and on social media. So Jennifer Camp is helping us do weekly updates and we post those on our website and on, uh, Facebook. And it's just a very quick recap and abbreviation of activities that are growing into our city. We like to promote things like notify me and a variety of other things. So if you haven't seen it, you might want to, I'll look at our website or our Facebook page and kind of see the little things that we're highlighting here and there for our community.
If I, if I may add to that, um, uh, as, as those, uh, weekly updates go out, if there are certain topics that the council members feel are, are important, as topics for the, uh, community to hear about, uh, you know, we talked about, uh, different things from the police department and what's going on, making sure that people are being proactive and keeping their, uh, homes safe and secure and locking doors of the cars, things like that, to fire season and making sure you're getting your, uh, smoke detectors checked on a regular basis. Spring clear blowouts, things like that. So if you have anything that you feel is, uh, of importance for that week, I know that I appreciate and thank Jen greatly. Uh, she's done an excellent job with that, so thank you, Jen.
So I'll touch, um, on Harvard and Henry Road, so just a really quick update. The start of Harvard Road, we thought it was going to be today, it's actually going to be, uh, this month. So it'll start by the end of October. And again, there'll just be staging and working on some of the preparatory work with lane changes, uh, in the spring. But that project's moving forward. And then Henry Road, um, Ben has just done an outstanding job addressing many of the challenges. But that project's moving forward. And then Henry Road, um, Ben has just done an outstanding job addressing many of the challenges which have to do with accommodating utilities, storing water, um, right-of-way questions, design questions, and right-of-way access and other improvements. So we're moving along. I, I would say every day we work really hard to keep that project in budget. Um, we're approaching the ninety percent. Um, we think that we'll have the design wrapped up probably in February, maybe March. But one of the things that we continually say to all of our stakeholders is it's an important project to our community. It's a project that has broad-based support. Uh, the city of Liberty Lake has committed resources to moving this project forward. And so we're very optimistic that, uh, we want to be very optimistic that the project retains funding. So as was mentioned in the mayor's budget message, just give a very big shout out anytime you can to promote the unity behind this project because I think that unity goes a long way. So I want to touch on, for a moment, I want to touch on just employee recruitment that's underway. We have a couple of maintenance, uh, excuse me, we have one maintenance worker position that's currently being advertised and it appears will be underway. As we go forward, we're kind of shifting some of our seasonal positions to full-time positions. And so this is part of that transition. These are projects, excuse me, these are positions that are funded in the budget. And then police officers, we have two pending offers. Um, there's background checks, the polygraph check, um, so on and so forth. So we have uh, two pending offers. And as soon as one person comes on board, Sergeant Martin will bring them to a council meeting so that you can at least uh, have a opportunity to meet our, our new patrol officer. Uh, police chief, um, open house starts tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Um, it is remote through Zoom. Hopefully you all have the Zoom connection so you can um, dial in and watch the open house. Interviews by community members will be on Thursday, October twenty-second. And then another group of interviews will be on December, excuse me, October twenty-third. So the interview process um, should be making good progress by the end of this week.
Uh, real, real quick on that for the open house, for the Zoom meeting, uh, just for everybody on the call, uh, how, to understand how it'll go, this will be an opportunity for all the council members, uh, citizens, as well as people from the police department to join that open house to get to meet those top candidates. A number of questions will be asked by our moderator, uh, Mike Painter with WASPIC. Um, and this will be after that you, anyone will have an opportunity to send an email in to myself or Katie and uh, give us your feedback on any of your thoughts about those candidates. And then on Thursday, as Katie mentioned, um, throughout the day, there will be uh, two different interview panels going on. One will be made up of some citizens slash business owners slash uh, um, um, what's my name before? Community volunteers, kind of non-for-profit, thank you. Uh, as well as a interview board uh, with surrounding city chief of police. So we're, we're grateful for all those that are volunteering their time to help out with that process. And now on Friday, the twenty-third, uh, myself, Katie Allen and uh, Brian Asmus will be interviewing uh, those, those final candidates. And then I will uh, take all that input in. Um, and uh, next week, I'm going to be taking the week to really put a focus on those uh, top candidates to make the best decision for that chief of police position. And uh, hope to have that decision wrapped up by the end of next week. Um, we'll get the offer out and start the process like we would any other officer coming in uh, with the polygraph, psych, background check, things like that. Um, so that's where we're at with that. Any questions on the police chief process real quick? I want to make sure everyone understood it. And, and please feel free to make sure and remind citizens that they're more than welcome to participate as far as watching goes. Uh, you won't really have an ability to interact during those questions when Mr. Painter um, asks the questions, but you'll definitely have the ability to give us the, your feedback.
And if everything goes as planned, we expect to have the council's confirmation of the candidate sometime in November. So uh, we don't know if it's going to be the uh, November third or uh, the, the seventeenth. So that is all underway. And then Tom, I'm going to ask you to put a picture of the box wrap. So STCU has continued to step up with our traffic signal boxes. Um, this is a picture that was selected by our Parks and Arts Commission for the wrap at Madison and Apple Hill. So it's um, okay, I'm going to call them sunflowers and they're not sunflowers. So Jen, tell me what kind of flowers they are.
There are sunflowers. Yeah, there's sunflowers.
Sunflowers, okay. So it's just a beautiful array of um, flowers that are going to be put on the wrap. Um, this donation will be presented to the council for your consideration at our council meeting. And again, this has been donated by STCU and it was selected from a, an array of other artists rendered. So that's how we ended up with this as a donation. So with that, I'm going to move down to COVID update on a number of things. So touchless items, I think I mentioned that we have been buying a lot of touchless plumbing devices as well as um, paper towel dispensers, those kinds of things. Um, we also looked at touchless doors and these touchless doors would be at city hall, the libraries, the police department and trailhead. Um, the time is ticking away and we just got uh, an estimate of the cost of some of those installations of these new doors. So the doors would be such that you could enter and exit without um, having to physically open the door. That goes a long way with our city resources because we cannot be always on the spot to disinfect some of the handles that we have in our city facilities. And so what I'd like the council to do is consider giving us the authority to award this work. Um, it's estimated at about forty-eight thousand dollars. However, we have some electrical work that needs to be done as well as contingency. So sixty thousand dollars to install touchless doors that also meet ADA requirements. I had a very good, uh, hard question from uh, our mayor Pro Tam. He goes, what happens if you lose the power? And I did learn that if you lose the power, you can manually open and close these as well. So these doors um, would need to be in by the end of November. Sixty thousand dollars and it would be covered by COVID, um, our CARE Act funding. I did also listen, just not to put um, any pressure on you, but to describe the urgency, I think that there's a likelihood that if we don't spend this money by the end of November, which is the deadline, that they are not going to extend it. And the reason they're not going to extend it is because the state wants that money to provide other programs and address funding to our folks in other areas throughout the state. So this is, these are items, I want to underscore though, that we're not looking to just throw money at something. We're really looking at things that will have a meaningful difference to our community and our operations. So with that, I'd like, I don't have time to put something together, bring it back to the council to vote on by November third because we'd like to move forward probably in the next week. So if it's okay, I would like, I ask for permission to move forward with um, spending our CARE Act funding up to sixty thousand dollars to install touchless doors at our city facilities.
I support the, uh, I support the gesture, Katie. Um, just quickly checking with Sean to see if we can um, as a motion tonight, request that spend.
So I'm sorry, what, I didn't hear Katie spend. What, what was that?
So we're asking for the council to give us the authority to move forward with the purchase and installation of touchless doors at our city facilities using CARE Act dollars. I'm going to stop there. Um, I, we want to get to work on the contract and underway because we have to complete the work by November thirtieth. The other thing I will, will mention is I do plan to bring back um, a contract that we will procure under the um, procurement process, um, bring a contract back to the council for their, for their vote on November third. Um, but that would be after we executed the uh, go-forward direction to a contractor.
So Katie, if I'm understanding is, are you asking for uh, the council to give direction for you to move forward with this circumstance and then you'll bring back a contract later relative to the dollar amount?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so that's, if, if you want a motion from the council and, and Dan, you know, motion to give direction to staff to move forward with that and that account, or excuse me, that a contract then will come back later. Um, I think you would just give a, a, a motion and a second for staff to move forward with what Katie's requesting.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that uh, staff prepare uh, for the next council meeting the approval to spend on the touchless doors. I'll cap it there.
Is there a second?
Second, I've got a question.
Uh, second by Councilmember Comiscus, discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Comiscus.
Um, just in case I missed it, I apologize. Um, I was just curious, how many in total are we looking at and where are we looking at putting them?
That's a great question. So let me start with the library. The library will have sliding doors, like when you go into a grocery store. And they will have two sets of those on the front and then they will have a touchless door on the back. The police department will have a swinging door. Um, and they have two sets of doors. If you've been there, there's the foyer and then the entrance into their lobby area. Um, city hall will have two doors. They will be at the front door and then the door to your left when you walk in the foyer. So that's two doors. And then flinkeys and our trailhead golf course will have another door. I will forward you tomorrow morning a complete breakdown of the, the research that Trevor Reagan did that, that covers the doors, the cost of the doors that are, is an estimate at this time and where they go and how they operate.
Councilmember Comiscus? We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I put myself back on mute. Um, question with regards to any of the, any of the other doors. I don't know if anybody else has seen, um, I've seen on some interior doors where it's a foot grab, where you can put the toe of your, your, your foot in and open the door toward you. Or I've also seen one um, handle where you can put your forearm into a door and open it this way. I didn't know if we've looked at those for any of our interior doors. Or even like bathrooms at, at the, at the parks, you maybe put one of the foot ones on there where you put your foot on, you can pull the door back so you don't have to touch the handle. Would that be worth looking into as well?
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. I've seen those where they're kind of, you kind of knock, you hit them and the door opens. I'll look at those, especially in our park restrooms, perhaps that could be an option. I, good idea. These aren't those doors, these are exterior doors, but I'll, we'll do some research.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Forrester?
Just a question. Um, if you, uh, if we go ahead and redo these doors for touchless down the road, do they need to be modified back to normal use?
Yeah, our plan was not to. Our plan was to keep them forever. Um, the person that's installing them also does installations at hospitals and stores. And they do meet all the ADA accessibility requirements and safety requirements as well. Um, but no, our plan, um, councilman Forrester, is to keep them for into the future.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tam, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilman Comiscus' suggestion is outstanding. Is that something we can make an amendment to this uh, purchase and add that into this or do we want to do that on a separate?
I don't have it priced, yeah. I haven't priced it out yet. Um, if you do, so right now this work that um, I've described with the exterior doors is approximately forty-eight thousand. I'm asking for up to sixty thousand because there's some electrical work that needs to be done to support it. If you do want to raise that, I, and I, I'm doing this without having done the research, but if you do want to increase that up to a hundred thousand, then we, we could work together the estimates on the doors for the interior doors that were recommended by councilman Comiscus. I just don't have those figures, nor have I done the research.
Mayor Pro Tam, Kathy?
I'd recommend that Councilman Dunn consider uh, maybe change in his motion. Because I think that, that's a great idea, get the process moving.
Sure, let's up it, let's call it um, a hundred K uh, for the touchless doors and door improvements, please.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
All right, we got a second. Call on favor.
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Okay, I just have it on the approval.
Just a quick note, I just did a quick Google search and just the first thing that came up, the foot hooks like thirty bucks. So minimal impact, hopefully.
Yeah, they're a pretty, pretty uh, inexpensive solution. It's a great recommendation.
If we could just buy them and keep them and then install them ourselves?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, they're, they come with the, like, three screws are the ones I'm looking at.
Yep, I know exactly which ones you talked about. I've used them.
Great idea.
Any other comments? Okay.
Um, another, our, I forgot track of how many times we distributed masks to our Liberty Lake residents, but we have another mask distribution this Friday, October twenty-third. We're going to go nine to ten-thirty. The numbers are coming down a little bit, but we still have some regular people that are, people that regularly come on Friday to pick up a box of their mask. So October twenty-third, city hall, nine to ten-thirty. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that Governor Ennis' order that public meetings are to be held remotely expires on November ninth. And so we know that November third, our next council meeting will be held remotely. So I just wanted to mention that. Um, under the desk, I'm going to touch on quite a few. Uh, library programs are still underway. The audit meeting and the remote access meeting, um, there's a telephone number. It's not a Zoom meeting, it's a call-in meeting. Um, it's Thursday, October twenty-second at ten AM. If you need in more information, let us know. Um, I think that that phone number has been forwarded, forwarded to all the council members. Um, then I'm moving on to the council, um, Anne.
Will there be a quorum that attend?
Oh, thank you. So our clerk would like to know how many of you are planning to attend? Because if there's more, if there's four of you that are attending, then we have to notice it as a public meeting. I know Mayor Pro Tam, uh, Kennedy is going to be there. Are there any other council members that plan on attending the audit meeting? So I'm seeing just um, Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tam Kennedy. Thank you. Um, a reminder, a week from tonight at six o'clock, we have a Zoom meeting in McFarland. This is a workshop for all of you. And the books that were ordered have, have arrived and we put them in your mailboxes along with your budget binder. So I started reading it. Um, hopefully some of you will have time to uh, look through it before next Tuesday. Um, fall leaf pickup is a little bit different this year. It's not going to be curbside service. Rather, residents are encouraged to take their bags or unbagged leaves to the treatment plant. The Liberty Lake Two and Water District is the main host of this event as they always are. It runs November second through November twentieth, dawn to dusk is what I'm told. And so feel free to take your leaves uh, to the treatment plant directly. And then finally, future blow is scheduled to start November twenty-first. So that has a change, that's the date that they've been holding for some time. And I did mention last week that Jennifer Camp and I did have a conversation with the health district to make sure that our event was um, approved by the, the, yep, the health district. And they gave us some very helpful suggestions which we are following. So Mayor, that concludes my report.
Any other comments from the council on Katie's report? Councilmember Comiscus?
Oh, just, I just noticed a couple other people on the, on the call where we, was there a spot for anybody from um, fire district or water district or Parks and Arts or anybody? Because I see them on the call. I didn't know if there was something they wanted to report. Or not.
Uh, if you guys don't mind, this is Nada. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, just a real quick, just Katie did a great job covering the, the leaf pickup change this year. The only thing I would add is that it wasn't obvious, this is because of the COVID thing. We have a really small staff. And if we had several people get infected and be out of, out of pocket, it would really be devastating to running the plant out there. So just trying to be really super careful and not get everybody out in the community exposed. And so that's really the reason for the change this year. And then we hope to be back to doing it the way we always have in collaboration with the city and doing the big pickup next year. So I'll tell everybody, it'll be fun adventure. Drive out to the treatment plant. They can check it out. They can go in, in the back there and dump all their leaves. Uh, it should be. They can go in the back there and dump all their leaves. It should be fun. Thanks.
Nada, can we get a tour of the water plant when we're back there?
No. If anybody wants a tour of the water plant, the sewer plant, really sewer plant, let me know. Because it's pretty impressive if you like that kind of thing. And it would be great to have folks around. We did a bunch of tours in the beginning when it opened up. But yeah, if anybody wants, just give me a shout or work through Katie and we can get that arranged. And that's all I had. Otherwise, everything's just going as good as it can be, I think. All the water's fresh and clear and clean this year. Somebody mentioned how we ended last year and it was pretty miserable. So it's all looking good.
Hey, Nada, actually, you have a quick one. Remind me when we're supposed to have backflow protection device checks for residential sprinklers?
That's a great question. I am also on the list of doing that. So it has to be done next spring. But I believe it's June 30th or June 1st. Go with June 1st, and I can double check on that. But yeah, but plan on doing it next spring when you have your sprinkler systems turned on or when you turn them on. You need to have somebody come out that's an official certified inspector to double to check your backflow prevention device. Make sure it works. So everyone should have that on their kind of list of things to do for next spring.
Mayor Protem Kennedy?
Yeah, Councilman Dunn, thank you for bringing that up. That brings up a good point is that we've been doing quite a bit of checking on who will do this inspection. And we're not really finding hardly anybody that does that. So it would be nice if this council or as the city goes forward, that if we can come up with a series of companies that will do that, so we can supply that information to our citizens, would be helpful.
And we have a list on our website, too, of certified inspectors. So you can go to the Sewer and Water District website, and there's a list there. But it'd be great to have it posted on the city's website, too, because people are going to be looking all over the place for it.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll we'll get that that list shared on our our website as well. Councilmember Foyer?
Yeah, if I can circle back to the COVID discussion on the door foot poles, if they're and I'm looking at them right now online as well, relatively inexpensive. Is that something that we can offer to businesses as well?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would fall under it would fall under the category. It would fall under the categories of how to utilize those dollars. So, yeah.
So.
Councilmember Foyer, I have a question. And I haven't looked at them to know exactly what all goes on the installation. But if we bought them and gave them to the business, do you think the business could install them themselves?
Well, thanks.
I could do it.
Okay. It sounds like it's pretty straightforward then. Okay.
It is very straightforward. It's very very simple to install.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's on interior doors?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll it's it'll be more for ones that don't have like knobs, lapshandles, yeah. Okay, any other councilmember questions or comments for Katie's report? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to workshop discussion. Actually, there aren't any. We we already covered them. That makes that part easy. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion on a consent agenda of item one. We'll October 6, 2020. City Council minutes?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda number two, motion to approve October 20th, 2020 vouchers in the amount of $673,412.45.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus. Any questions or comments on the vouchers? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda number three, authorize a total of $50,720 to replace the HVAC units, thermostat and lighting for Liberty Lake Police and Municipal Library Building, and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with R and R Heating and Air Conditioning.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Comiscus. Discussion. Mr. Foyer?
Thank you. One of the things I noticed on their contract is they are calling out an additional 29.75 plus tax to do a one-time one-time tune-up on the remaining six rooftop units. Does anybody know when the last time when the last time is they've been serviced? And if so, if it's been several years, maybe we should consider having them serviced.
Councilmember Foyer, this is Katie. I do not know when they were serviced. Ben, did you want to weigh in on that recommendation?
Yeah, so that was another option that they had proposed when they sent that over. And I thought that was a great option to have. We were going to look at them when they were doing the install and and check through all the lines and then look at any records that we have. But to be honest, I don't think they've it's been a long time since they've been serviced. And it helps with our maintenance costs, and it's within that management contingency that would be approved tonight. So if if it looked like we needed to do it, I think that that was something that we would go ahead and and perform at the time of installation.
Is that part of your original number?
That's part. It's not part of the original 40,000. But if you look at the approval, there's a contingency in there that would cover that.
Well, that's part of your contingency. Okay, great.
Yep.
So we don't need to amend anything?
Correct.
So is it your is it your intention to do it then?
It's my intention to go through when they're seeing, when they're going through and installing everything and verify that we actually do need to do it and then double check records. But most likely, we're going to do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kennedy?
No. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. All right, we will now move on to public hearing and appeals for the City of Liberty Lake proposed 2020-21 budget. There you go. I added budget.
Right on.
I didn't forget. All right, don't worry about it. Okay, so this is a public hearing opportunity. The time is 7:57.
This is Alexander. Is this another opportunity for the public?
Regarding the budget specifically?
Sorry, I should wait till the end. Or should I just wish you all a good night?
No, you can you'll have one more opportunity at the end of the night to talk if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any citizen comments on the budget? You can let us know by hitting the chat feature. Okay, not hearing any. We will close that out at 7:08. Okay, any resolutions? No? No ordinances? No emergency ordinances? Introduction of upcoming agenda items?
Okay, so Mayor and Council, our city clerk Anne sent you an updated one before our council meeting. So I'll just touch on that. Reminder again that we have the workshop a week from tonight within McFarland. Moves on to November 3rd, election night. The following things have been identified on the agenda. One is we have a workshop at 6:00 p.m. related to the 2021 budget. So they'll have hopefully a chance to have looked through it, bring a lot of questions and comments. And RJ will be here to answer those, as well as some of our other directors. Presentation by Peter King, who's the CEO of AWC. It will be a remote presentation to recognize Mayor Burkner and Mayor Protem Kennedy for their achievement of the advanced certificate of municipal leadership. We have a presentation by Visit Spokane. Meg Winchester will be going over their request to increase the hotel tax here in Liberty Lake. And she'll be able to answer questions related to how those funds are proposed to be spent. We have a proclamation that it is National Nurse Practitioner Week. Councilmember Kurtz asked if we could talk about term limits in a workshop. So I'm going to be doing some research, coordinating with our attorney, Sean Vaut, and we will provide an informational memo to council about what the law says, et cetera. So it's an opportunity for you to talk about, do we want term limits? If so, what's the process for moving forward? We plan to do a little bit of research and find out what cities do have term limits, what cities don't, some of the potential advantages, some of the disadvantages. But I just thought it would be a good opportunity to have that discussion with all of you on November 3rd. We plan to award a bid for internet and phone services. That procurement is still underway. And RJ and Todd will have a recommendation on that contract. We do want you to approve an agreement with our city attorney extending the terms of his service for another year. We also have snowplow contracts. So this is on-call contractors that help back up our city crews if we end up in lengthy snow operations where we have multiple days on end that we have to plow our streets. And so we generally contract with contractors to help us in the removal of snow using city equipment. And then finally, the acceptance of a donation of a traffic signal box rack at Madison. And that donation is being made by STCU. So it's a pretty full night. And a public hearing on, excuse me, a public hearing on the budget. And then I do have a question. It was brought up at our last meeting that the request was to have another special meeting on the budget, November 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And so if you would like to keep that meeting, I don't have to know tonight, but you want to maybe think about that because it is it is on our agenda right now for a special meeting on the budget, November 10th. So if you want that or you don't want that, please let me know by or our city clerk by November 3rd.
Councilmember Comiscus?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and weigh in on that question, Kay. I think the separate budget meeting review, whatever we want to call it, that we've had the last several years has been extremely fruitful. And I think it would be very counterproductive if we don't have it. As I noted during our last meeting, we end up, we're able to bounce ideas off each other and ask questions that somebody else may not have thought of. I just go back to one of my very first budget reviews when I first got on council. I think I submitted 20-some questions, and I got all of the answers back in emails. And it was very evident that some of the other council members hadn't read those answers because they were asking the same questions that I had already asked and answered. So if we're all in the same room together and we're feeding off of each other, we all get the same information at the same time, and we're all up to speed. Just my thought.
Good thought, Chris.
Mayor Protem Kennedy?
I agree with Councilmember Comiscus. I think we should make that decision. Put it to the council now to make that decision. Don't wait for councils to periodically give information to Katie and then get back to us.
I agree. Let's keep the date.
Keep the date.
So I got so far three on keeping the date. Councilmember Foyer, are you good with that?
Oh, sure.
Thanks. Councilmember Kurtz? Councilmember Dunn?
If we need to drop it, it'll become more obvious as we get closer to that date.
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
If we have an exceptionally productive meeting on workshop on November 3rd, can we call it off after that?
We'll 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 weigh it as we go. But I but I would agree with Councilmember Comiscus and Mayor Protem Kennedy. There is actually a lot of extreme value in getting to do some deeper dive questions and having everyone hear those questions and conversations. And I highly encourage everybody to be prepared for that meeting because it is some great dialogue that occurs during those meetings, for sure.
I'll create my record of number of questions.
And in your package, you will also have a highlighter and a little sticky note so you can flag certain pages to have discussions and everything. So you'll be well prepared. Councilmember Comiscus?
Yeah, sorry for talking so much tonight. I was sitting in my office too long with nobody around. I would like to offer, though, for for our new members, either councilmembers Kurtz or Foyer, if you if you want a little tutorial or anything on how to read that budget, I'd be more than happy to spend some time with you and go through that.
Yeah, we will also have staff available if you have questions as well. Okay. Now, this will be your second opportunity. Oh, sorry, Mayor Protem Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was waiting for the make this comment about the upcoming agenda meeting with Katie. If you'll notice, we have a new format and visit with Katie. I think there's some confusion in our last meeting that questions were brought up about the to-be-determined. And if was things on there that shouldn't be, we should take them off or consider. Apparently, we came across is that the council, it was implied, wanted to get rid of that completely. I, for one, rely on that to-be-determined because there are things on there that might not come up for a period of time. But if a council member's brought it up or staff has brought something up for a future meeting, that's a great place to have it. Seeing how this is titled, City Council Advanced Agenda, I propose that we go back to including that to-be-determined. I really don't want to see that thing leave.
Any other comments from the council on that?
I don't have any problem with items appearing in a forward agenda which don't have a date. Don't have a problem with it. Gives us something to think about, something to take target on if we feel like it.
Yeah, maybe an extra section at the bottom.
Yeah, or maybe put it in the middle.
Or at the beginning, wherever you want. All right, so now we will move on to the second round, the citizen comments. Mr. Alexander, if you're still on with us, this would be another opportunity.
Yes, I am.
All right.
One would call me between 8:00 and 10:00 from now through Friday. I'll be glad to offer my expertise as the implementation expert. To me, the strategic decision is how do we get over the virus? If we do not, our citizens will not be safe. Businesses and jobs will be screwed here. I am reading John Barry's book right now about the 1918-19 great influenza where we lost 51 million. Philadelphia had parades and had their heads stuck like an ostrich in the thing. Friday at 10:00, if no one wants me, I will offer my services for free. I wouldn't accept a dollar to Otis Orchard, Post Falls, or Elk, Washington, where we just bought a cabin, and I won't bother you anymore. I wish you all good luck, and I still love Liberty Lake. But I think that with the flu, with the second wave of the pandemic coming, that that's more important than cutting 25 more trees down on Mission Street. That's more important than cutting the grass really short throughout town. What is important of strategic importance is that we address this. The young woman in New Zealand just got reelected for how well she handled the virus. We could be a showcase here in Liberty Lake, and I wish you all the best of luck.
We thank you, Mr. Alexander, for everything that you've done for our community and all your comments tonight. Thank you very much, and stay safe out there. And Nada, I believe you had a comment?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I did double check on our website. It's June 30th. So everyone has to have their backflow prevention devices tested and certified by June 30th. And then also, if you go on our website under news, there's a couple of articles on this with links. And there is a link to a list of And there is a link to a list of about twenty or so certified backflow prevention device testers and certifiers with links to their websites and phone numbers and stuff. So go to the website and you can get that. And we'd be happy to share that if you guys want to post it on the city website, too, to make it easier for folks.
Councilmember Kurt?
We have to redo that every year, right?
Yeah, it's every year, yeah. And just to remind everyone, you know, this is one of those things that if you look around, a lot of districts do. We had always been kind of, you know, okay on it, let people take care of themselves. But with the issue we had last fall with contaminated water, it became just something that we couldn't look the other way on anymore. So this is strictly because we need to make sure people have their systems tested regularly and that they're safe and sanitary and don't contaminate the water supply.
One of our citizens had a question for Nada. Is this just for the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District?
Yeah, that's what we've been talking about here, it's just for Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Yeah, if you're within the district boundary and you have water supply, you have to turn in your certification for your sprinkler system. Otherwise, we'll have to take drastic action.
We don't want that.
No, you don't want that.
We don't want Nada coming down on you. So get that backflow tested.
And you don't want me touching any of your sprinkler stuff either. So you don't want me out there trying to fix anything.
That's good, that's good.
I feel so bad.
Yeah.
Any other citizen comments? Mr. Birch, I see you're on, did you have any comments or anything?
No, not this evening, thank you, though.
Okay, we are putting a reminder out to make sure everybody's checking their smoke detectors. So we're putting that reminder out.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, not hearing any, we will be going into executive session with no actions being taken after the fact. And then we will adjourn the meeting. So we will start the executive session at, we'll go eight seventeen to get everyone to be able to switch over. Those are related to potential litigation, real estate matters, as well as personnel matters. We expect it'll probably take roughly, it'll give us about thirty-five minutes. We'll start there and see if we have to extend it out. So we will see you guys in about six minutes.
Thanks.
Thank you all, be safe.